Good evening, welcome everyone. I want to call the June meeting of the Emmitsburg Planning Commission to order. We'll start off by giving a pledge of allegiance. So I want to start off this evening by introducing a new alternate on the planning commission Patricia Galloway. I've known Patricia for a few years. I think I first met you when I was doing a home inspection for one of your clients. Patricia is a realtor and then we served for several years together on the Frederick County Affordable Housing Council and also as Board of Directors on Interfaith Housing Alliance. So, welcome Patricia. Like I said, she is the alternate, so she's in the audience this evening. Would you like to say anything else about yourself? Great, good to have you here. So our first item of business is review and approval of the May 22nd minutes. Do any commissioners have any comments about the minutes from May? If not, would someone like to move for approval?
I approve to accept the minutes as presented.
That's the motion, and is there a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion and second to approve the May 22nd minutes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved for May. We now have a time period for any public comment. If anyone here would like to make a public comment about anything? Hello? Okay. No public comment this evening, so we'll move right on to our business. We do have some old business. Further discussion about the proposed Economic Development Flex District, but we're going to move that to the end of our agenda. So we can deal with our new business first. And the first item for new business is to approve the 2022 annual report for the planning commission. I take it by now the commissioners have had a chance to read this. Would you like to say anything about this Najila?
Um, so it's as required by the state, the planning commission has to prepare and submit. And no report for the previous calendar year. She do this every year, but it's pretty short and sweet. And um, do you want me to go over every single item?
It's, it's pretty straightforward, I think, unless other commissioners want her to do that.
Okay.
I think we're good.
All right, great.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the annual report for 2022?
Um, I would make a motion that we approve the attached 2022 annual planning report.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the 2022 annual planning report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, I was going to abstain from this. I believe next week we do look at this as the Board of Commissioners also approves it.
That's correct. Well, actually, it's more like you're, we're filing it with the Board of Commissioners, but it gets mentioned at the meeting. But the planning commission approves it.
So the Board of Commissioners has no further action on this?
Basically not.
Would it be permissible for me to change my, change my vote to aye?
Sure. Well, it's unanimous. So our second item of new business is approve a stormwater management concept slash development slash improvement plan to redevelop the entrance area for the Seton Shrine Museum at the Daughters of Charity Ministries property. Take it away.
So for this project, so like you said, redeveloping the entrance and drop off area for the Seton Shrine Museum entrance at the Daughters of Charity Ministries property. It involves demolishing an existing parking area to install a new drop off loop sidewalks and permeable pavers as its subsurface of stormwater management DMP. Approval of the site plan would be necessary to allow the applicant to develop the site as contemplated by the proposed plan. And staff suggests that the plan be approved conditionally with the conditions listed under suggested motion. And a set of technical comments from the town engineer has been attached to the memo.
Okay, thank you. Do any commissioners have any questions for staff?
I just had a comment on the reverse side. Backside, under number, item number one, address comments by town engineer CRK and K memo dated, and we should change that to June 13th.
That's right. Okay, I'll do that. Thanks.
That's it for me.
Catch. Any other questions for staff? Would the, is someone here from the applicant? You introduce yourself, please.
Hi, Chris Chaney with FSA, our engineers.
Okay.
I, I think run through an explanation of the plan if you'd like me to.
If you want to hit any highlights, just don't have to go into detail, but it's pretty thick.
The post plan before you is sort of extending.
Oh, yes.
Is extending a previously previous project that was applied for to enclose a drop off loop area at the Seton Shrine. It's on the southern side of the building. Currently they have a drop off loop that goes under a canopy area. Outside of this project, they propose to enclose this canopy area to make it more of a formal entrance space for where the museum entrance is going to be at that property. So we're basically just moving the drop off loop away from this canopy out front. So buses and things, people can come up, drop off, and then go and park in the existing parking lot. So it's, it's pretty much mirroring what is already out there. It's just making the drop off loop a little smaller. Purvious pavers were mentioned, just because we are expanding on the impervious surfaces by I think it's 1500 to 2000 square feet, so we're just providing some stormwater to compensate for that expansion. But we, you know, again, like I said, I'm here to answer any other questions, but I request conditional approval on addressing all comments.
Okay.
Planning Commission.
Do any commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I thought I had, as I reading this. I think that takes such a mess right now. I live right there, so it's, you're going to tie everything back into the, the original concrete, the walkways that you're not going to, right? The way I read this.
Yeah.
So it's not going to affect our handicap access or anything.
No, 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 no handicap effects. We'll, we'll tie all sidewalks in prior to handicap parking, so that'll remain the same. I think you'll actually be able to drop off at this entrance, so for handicap access, if it's easier to drop off at the entrance.
Currently, there's, there's a, there's a, there's a cut through, a curb cut. As you get out of the circle, before you hit the parking spaces, there's a curb cut.
Right.
That goes across, so you can, you can actually make a circle of the whole property.
Right.
And a handicap vehicle and so forth, your chair or something.
Right, that, that won't be affected in this plan.
It's hard to tell from what's there now, that's the problem.
Right, sure, I understand. Yeah, currently they are constructing and enclosing that canopy out there now, so it is active construction site with fencing as well, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Comments? Yeah, well, it seems pretty straightforward to me. It looks like a good plan and should improve things a bit. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'm moving to approve the, I'm still going to get the right wording here.
You can basically read the suggested motion if you wish, Dan.
Yeah. Where is the exact word? I know it's on here somewhere. Thought it was. Do, 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 oh yeah. Prove, approve the SWM concept development improvement plan for Seton Shrine Museum entrance with the conditions as stated in the the staff report.
Yes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the stormwater management concepts slash development slash improvement plan for Seton Shrine Museum entrance with the conditions as outlined on the staff memo. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, sorry.
No abstentions? Is approved unanimously.
Great, thank you everyone. Appreciate it. Wish you well.
So now we'll move back to some old business. We're continuing a discussion on a proposed Economic Development Flex District, which would be a text amendment to our town ordinances. So Mrs. Song. Or Leslie, which, who's taking off here?
Sure. So since, since the last meeting, we had an opportunity to have a staff meeting with the applicant or more correctly applicants council to work through some of the questions and concerns. And so what you have before you is the result of that meeting, and we believe that it fairly addresses many of the concerns that the, that staff had regarding the proposed language of the ordinance. There are a couple of open issues that need to be discussed because one, one of the things that came up was, you know, setbacks and how to determine those. And the applicant, of course, has some specific parcels of property and those are outlined in that little highlighted map that you've received. And some of that is sort of, as you're coming south on 15, you know, it's like the first thing you see, the elevation. You know, when you're coming into Emmitsburg, and so some issues or comments were raised regarding, well, how, how do we protect that vista? And, you know, we don't, we don't want it to look like, you know, with all due respect to Glenn Burney, a little, like a little Glenn Burney with a million signs and, and unattractive, and unattractive presentation, if you will, as you come into Emmitsburg. And so when you review the the, the proposed language, there are some things there that, that should, I think, bear some discussion. And then also to keep in mind that what we're talking about here is, it, it's really, it's interesting because it, what it really is, is zoning plus. And so when you have a, an economic development flex district proposable for you, this allows the planning commission to, you know, have a little more control, if you will, in the future use of the property as opposed to just, say, zoning it, you know, light industrial or commercial. And then you can do any of those things and put them anywhere within certain parameters, of course, when it comes to subdivision and site plan approval. But the, the economic flex development flex district allows you to address things, you know, such as what I just mentioned, you know, preserving the vista, looking at, you know, the various land bays, preserving as much open space as you can and having some influence over you know, parking and pedestrian access as part of the condition of what we're calling here a master plan. And of course, it's not a master plan in the other sense of the word. It would be a master plan for the purposes of the applicant who's seeking to development, develop the property. So that's sort of the 20,000 foot view.
So would the applicant's attorney like to make any comments?
I'll be brief because Leslie encapsulated it pretty well.
Okay.
As you remember, we, we were here a couple of months ago and sort of gave you the, the overview of what we were trying to do. And it is important to remember that while I am representing a specific property and or this is just a text amendment, this is not a rezoning or a master plan, that would be a separate item that would be back in front of you and the Board of Commissioners if at some time in the future, maybe, right? We don't even know if that would happen. But the idea was to provide property owners with property of a certain size or larger with the ability to get a floating zone, you know, rezoning for the property. And then a master plan, which as Leslie said, would give the planning commission and then the Board of Commissioners the, the right to sort of, I don't want to use the word micromanage in a, in a negative way, but micromanage in a thoughtful and planning way where the land uses would be, would be located throughout the parcel where the green spaces would be, that sort of thing. When we originally got staff comments, we had some concerns, Andrew Brown and I did. So we did have, as Leslie said, a, a meeting with staff a couple of weeks ago. I would say that the, the draft that is in front of you tonight has addressed virtually all of our concerns. So that, high kudos to Leslie Najila and to Mr. Jakubiak for working so well with us. And, and to be honest, you know, we, we were trying to be flexible too. Mr. Trout owns the property, but he's a property owner, you're the town, you have to decide what's best for the town. But with all that said, you know, there are a couple of points in here that Leslie makes that need to be discussed. But one of the things I mentioned to, to your staff in our meeting two weeks ago was when we were doing projects in along 15 in Frederick City, the same concern was brought up then that the last thing a municipality needs is to have as its entrance feature, an ugly development. And the examples that were given to us at the city of Frederick were when you're coming up 270 and you get to Route 85 and you look around, the first thing you see is this string of fairly ugly development. And that's some people's first, you know, vision of the city. And so we share that concern with the town of Emmitsburg. And so what the city did in that instance was they had us create a gateway corridor plan that showed landscaping and signage along 15 in a way that would, you know, act as a visual enhancement, not a visual, I don't know what you want to call it, negative for the town. And we're absolutely committed to working with you all on that. I don't think that Leslie has created any language yet for the, for the text amendment, but she and I can work on that because I think that's someplace, that is somewhere where we are absolutely in agreement. It is not our intent for this property or any other property that might want to use this to, to be a negative for the town. That's, that's not the objective at all. And, you know, we're not trying to, you know, cram every square inch of development on any specific piece of property either. And that is one of the, you know, one of the benefits of doing the floating zone with a master plan is you can literally work with us or work with any applicant and create those enhancements that you want to see to the project that might not otherwise be available in a standard Euclidean zone. So that was a long way of saying, we're pretty good with where we are. But so I, I don't really have prepared comments. I noticed that Leslie put in the, the draft, you know, these highlighted yellow comments, you know, need to discuss at planning commission. Well, we're here to, you know, hear what you have to say more than, but like I said, we're, we're very happy with where we are right now. Did you agree, Andrew? So.
Well, that answered my first question is, are you okay with most of this?
Yes, absolutely. I have, the only comment, literally, one comment I had, which is kind of, I, I almost don't want to say it because it's so small, but there is something in here, and I think Chris put it in his draft and we just neglected to take it out. But in the master plan design standards, it talks about architecture. And the master plan actually does not propose, it's on it's section 17.26060 B Master Plan Design Standards, I think it's page three or four. Anyway, talks about architecture, but the master plan that would go with one of these doesn't actually propose any buildings. Buildings come later at site plan. So you'll get your bite of the apple for architecture when we do, when a site plan would come through. But there wouldn't actually be anything to review at the master plan level. Leslie, do you see where I'm?
Yeah, it's in, you mean in subpart C?
Yeah.
Yeah, because we'd removed it from B.
You did, but we, we did, I think we just missed it.
Yeah, yeah, no, because that would be premature.
It would be premature.
So strike the architecture.
Correct.
Yeah, not that we have any problem with the town, you know, providing input on architecture at site plan. That's, but it's just, it's just premature at this stage.
Master plan.
Not a master plan. So other than that, we're in a, we're very close to having, I think, a text amendment that can go to public hearing.
Excuse me, if I may?
Yes.
Yeah, do you want to just talk for a little bit about FAR, the F A R? Because we went around on.
Yeah, and I don't know that we ever came to.
We didn't.
Tell the audience what that.
Okay, so floor area ratio is effectively, it's how much of the land is being taken up by building footprint. And we had proposed, and I don't, Leslie, do you remember what section that was?
Oh, and the other.
Here it is, it's, it's.
Well, we put it in, in three. It's right, the, the highlight is under para three, but
Yeah.
Basically in, in our discussions, we, we talked about imposing a maximum.
Correct.
But not imposing a minimum.
Okay. Correct.
Fair to say?
That's fair.
Yeah.
And so the idea being that, again, to sort of reiterate, one of the things I said when I got up here, which is we're not, the intent isn't to try to cram every square foot of development onto these properties. The whole point of doing a, a master plan with a rezoning is to get excellence in design. And so we had proposed a cap of, of the F A R, and I apologize, Leslie, since you've cut it out of this version.
I think it was point four.
Which is, you know, that's fairly dense, that's 40% of the property, so, but that would be the maximum. And it would be up to the town to impose what the maximum would be. I mean, that's just the statutory maximum. If you said, we don't want to see anything over point three, that's at the discretion of the town, but that would hopefully be something that would be a discussion between whoever this future developer is. Mr. Trout is not a developer, he's not proposing to create a, a business park here. He's proposing to give a developer the ability to do a business park, but presumably that developer would come into town with a plan, right? This is what I want to do, this is what I want to see. And then negotiate with the town as to what the appropriate F A R would be. And if he said, I want to do point four, and you felt that's too excessive, that's within the town's purview to lower that amount.
So just to be sure, I understand and everyone else understands, when you say point four, that's the ratio of the amount of square footage in the buildings as compared to the land.
To the land. Did I get that right?
Yep.
Yep. I always trust Andrew, he knows this stuff.
And to be clear, it, it does not include parking.
Doesn't include parks.
Does not.
Just square footage.
For clarity.
Buildings.
Right.
Building.
The building.
Correct. But again, you know, we put a, a max in there just because we I'm smart, but I'm not like Picasso, you know, I didn't create this out of whole cloth here. We borrowed liberally from the town of Newmarket, which has an economic flex zone. We also borrowed heavily from the city of Frederick's MU rezoning and master plan process. And that's where we got the F A R from, was from other municipalities. And knowing that it's Emmitsburg and knowing, as Leslie pointed out, you know, that this is a small town. It's the gateway to Frederick County coming from the north. And, you know, we want to have you all have maximum control of, or, you know, if you said this is too much, you should be able to say that it's too much.
And whether it looks different than Newmarket, where there is, it's along 70 there.
But you can understand the similar concern.
Yeah, but 70, I don't see, I don't, 15 seems even more scenic than 70 is in my mind.
Correct, but the point, the point being is that, that they're both, both municipalities and the city of Frederick have highway visibility. And it's important for it not to be cluttered, not to be ugly, not to detract from the town. So now with that said, I drive past Newmarket and I see Adventure Park USA, but that's just me. You know, the, the pretty part of Newmarket is kind of hidden when you're driving by at 70 miles an hour on 70. But in, in any event, I agree with you, Emmitsburg is very different and US 15 is very different from my 70, which just makes it even more important that you all control that process.
So basically, I think that what, what I would recommend is that staff be directed to include in the ordinance, you know, depending upon your recommendations to the Board of Commissioners, because of course that's where this goes next, is, is that we include a maximum floor area ratio of an amount that, you know, that, that you believe appropriate.
Now, Leslie, just to be clear, this, we're, they're not approving this tonight, right?
No, we're talking about it.
Okay, this is a workshop.
Still a workshop.
Yeah, so you're not voting on anything.
No, 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 no.
So we'll come back to you with hopefully a little bit more or a lot more finished.
Right.
Text amendment where staff and the applicant have no more headbutting.
Yeah.
And then you all can, you know, vote up or down or, or make changes at that point. But if you have direction for us.
That's what I'm asking for. Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to confuse everybody.
It was, your wording made me think, oh gosh, they're going to approve it right now.
So I'm pretty good at, at spatial things, recognizing spatial ratios. But I have a lot of trouble understanding or, or envisioning, I guess is the word, the difference between point three and point four FAR for something like this.
Is that something we could provide an exhibit, Andrew? Like what a project that had point four, point three might look like?
I mean, in a round for the record.
Yes.
Excuse me, could you come up to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
So, you know, the ratio is very important and it's important from, this is something Bruce and I need to talk about, but is it the race? Is that point four for the whole project or is that point four going to be carpet? Yeah, that's it. To, to each of individual land bay, because like a point four, for instance, if it's a two or three story building, right? The, the floor area ratio goes much higher, because now you have, for instance, if you have a 20,000 square foot building on one acre, that's about a half. Now you put two stories, that's 40,000 square feet on one acre, that's a F A R of one, if that makes sense. So on the bigger buildings that are one story, they tend to get much lower, closer to point one, point two, because when you have a big one story footprint and a lot of parking, the, the ratio of building to the acreage goes down.
Smile.
So, you know, at a point four for the whole project, that's, I mean, that would be a great max for us, and we feel that, I don't know that we would get there.
It wasn't intended to be.
For the whole thing, so from that perspective, I think that would, I don't think anyone's going to build more than that there. I don't think that the town could have that. There's not enough draw from a perspective of, from interest from those types of companies to go vertical there. So point four seems wild, very reasonable on it for a maximum perspective. To, to give you an example, like St. John's properties that you see, like the big flex buildings where it's like the businesses across the front with the truck corridors in the back, those are typically about a point one F A R. And then the bigger buildings that are like the distribution buildings are closer to a point one five.
So, so remind me again, where did the point four come from?
We, we borrowed it from other municipalities.
That's right. Yeah, okay.
You want me to get back to the mic?
Sure.
Please.
In a, in an urban environment where buildings go up, you would never have point four. You would never see this in Baltimore or Bethesda or anything like that, or, you know. Crystal City in Virginia, those are. Yeah, multi-story, but for a town. Like Emmitsburg, and again, we stole this from Newmarket. You know, point four is probably as high as you were going to want to go, and as Andrew said, we'll probably not even get there. So.
So that also kind of hinges with, um, the one place that talks about inserting language regarding size and scale. Did I say anything about height somewhere?
There, there is a height restriction of forty five feet.
Okay, okay. So forty five feet.
Yeah, four stories.
So, do you want a recommendation from us tonight, uh, Leslie about the, the FAR?
Um, well, I, I think that that would be very helpful in terms of us drafting, because what this is right now is an opportunity. For everybody to, um, you know, in the light of day. Have a discussion about possible, um, possible questions, and to the extent that you can provide us direction before a public hearing. I think it would be great, um, and then we can come back knowing that, you know, we're at least marching in the right direction. So I think that if, if the board, or excuse me, if the commission is ready to weigh in on what. You know, what you believe we should include as an F A R of the floor area ratio. You know, we'll happily take that recommendation back to the drawing board. I mean, we do have a couple of other highlighted areas also where I think some input. From the commission and from the applicant. Would be helpful. So the, the size and scale, I mean, that, that's a little bit more. Specific than the F A R. I mean, that could go to, you know, like, if there, for example, if you wanted to have height restrictions or. And this goes to the, kind of the setbacks and, you know, we were talking about the, the gateway kind of criteria that you would consider. Um, and that the, because the way this works eventually is that if, if it passes, what would happen is an applicant would come to you. You would review it, you would make a recommendation, you would make findings, it would then go to the Board of Commissioners, then they do the same thing all over again. And then impose whatever criteria, um, you know, at the time that they believe is, is appropriate or are appropriate. So, sorry, I kind of covered the waterfront on that one.
Yeah, that's okay.
You know, or, or we can go back and, you know, come up with some suggestions. But if, to the extent you have thoughts about this now, and, or have questions of the applicant, I think this is a great opportunity.
Right. Feelings from any, uh, any thoughts from any other commissioners right now, about anything?
I think you alluded to it, and I, I for one, if possible, I'd like to see a visual example of something. Local to us, like what a point four would look like. And maybe a point three. That sound.
Would make me comfortable, yes. I mean, I, I, I would probably be comfortable. Understanding that you'll probably never even reach point four, and just making that the cap, but just so we're more comfortable. Be nice to see some samples.
That's all I had at the moment.
And. Some samples of size and scale, I'm, I'm not sure how you do that, but. I, I know when we were reviewing the South Frederick Quarters Plan, you know, the planners came up with some. Different photos and things. What things might look like.
Yep, Leslie, just a, a question, in addition to the FAR, could we put in there ratios between permeable and impermeable surfaces?
Well, I, you know, to, to a certain extent, that, that is going to be dictated by. You know, stormwater management plans, and the county, of course, controls how those things work. I mean, anything with, that disturbs more than five thousand square feet, you're going to wind up with that. You know, where, where, whether you like it or not, I think that if you wanted to include. Something in there or in the criteria that, you know, environmental considerations. Should be addressed by, by an applicant in connection with the submission of its master plan. I think that would be totally appropriate. So for example, if you have a stand of remarkable trees or. Or if there are certain, you know, sensitive environmental areas in the property and you want to protect those, or maybe you even want to. Highlight them if you're going to have a pedestrian access area, then, then you could call that out during this process. And, um, and have the applicant, you know. Present to you, you know, any special features that are unique or. You know, of, of interest to the town in terms of preservation.
Can I just touch on that, because it's a really good point, Commissioner Hagan? We drafted this sort of for maximum flexibility for the town, and as Leslie said, you guys can address all sorts of things like environmental features, buffers, pedestrian. But I actually, I don't think it would be inappropriate to have. Some form of minimum open space as part of it, which is. When I say open space, that's not parking, that's pervious, not impervious. So, um, let me talk to Andrew, Leslie, and we'll, we'll provide something. I, I'm not sure why it's, it's frankly not in here, because typically a master plan does have a requirement for. A certain amount of green area. And we were proposing to have that in any event, like we said, along fifteen to provide, you know, a visual. Buffer, corridor, whatever you want to call it, landscaped. So let me talk to Andrew and we'll come up with a number for the public hearing for you.
That sounds reasonable. Good with you?
I have a few comments.
Yeah, Valerie.
I think this is the third draft of this document, and I noticed, um. There were significant changes from the previous one, so I wanted to ask, would it be possible when you make the updates to use track changes this time? So we can see what's changed in the document.
Yeah, we, we can certainly do that, um, when we did it. On this last go around, frankly, the result was an unreadable hot mess.
I bet.
And, and so, we just thought, no, we need to just scrap it and start over, but going forward, we can absolutely do that.
And is it appropriate to add the definitions in this document for the B two, O R I, N I P? I've looked up those. Definitions, but each one has a certain set of requirements. So it would almost be useful as you're reading this document to see what the requirements are for that zone in particular.
What we could do, since we try not to like. Keep repeating ourselves in legislation, but for the purposes of the Planning Commission's consideration, we could certainly provide an attachment with the definitions. For each of those districts, for those three districts, so that you have them at your fingertips in evaluating the, uh, the proposed ordinance.
Okay, that would be great. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay.
See, what else do we have here? Oh, yeah. So. If you look at page five, I, section I. The plans expire within three years if a site plan or a subdivision plot approval. Hasn't been obtained for part or all of the project, and I will say, um. That the applicant and staff kind of, I don't want to say, well, butted heads, but it was like, well, wait a minute, how do we prevent? Like some isolated land bay from getting developed, and then the rest, just to preserve the master plan's, you know, validity going forward. And then be stuck with, you know, a McDonald's in the wilderness for the next twenty years. And I don't know that we ever came up with a resolution to that, Bruce.
We did not, because we disagreed. Uh, and the example I used was, um, Emmitsburg East Industrial Park, our favorite. Development just to the south of Mr. Trout's property where you had Emmitsburg Glass. You know, which was Mr. Reaver's business, be developed, and then the remainder of the park was then undeveloped for. Kathy here, I don't remember how many years, but fifteen years or something like that. Long time, and I know Mr. Reaver would have been pretty darn upset if you guys had said, well, you haven't done anything, we're going to take your zoning away. So it is, it is in my experience typical that when you get a site plan approved and a building built, that vests your, your master plan. But with that said, I understand Leslie's concern that you would have maybe one building and the remainder of the property vacant, I, I would also say. And I, I want to say this in a nice way, but this is Emmitsburg, right? This is not. An exploding metropolis, thank God, or else, you know, you all wouldn't live here. But that just means things move relatively slowly compared to other jurisdictions.
That could happen today, because we do have B two zoning there, so someone could go to McDonald's today, nothing could happen.
Anyway, so.
On that portion.
On that portion, so, you know, my, what, my response to Ms. Powell was. The town periodically. I think by state law, at least every ten years, updates your comprehensive plan and your, and your zoning mess. And that would certainly give you the opportunity if you were unhappy with the fact that there was. Two buildings there and nothing else to just downzone. The part that was undeveloped at that point, that's within the town's purview, that's Maryland law, you're not vested until you build on it. So you could always take the zoning away if you were just frustrated that nothing was happening, but at the same time. We would, it would be our preference that, that a building, getting a site plan approved and building it would vest that, that master plan effectively. For the length of the project.
Yep, we're not exactly on the same page. I noticed how I also became Ms. Powell.
Again, I, I was using a real world example from your town, but I would also say that my, my experiences with these master plans is. You don't build the whole thing to vest it, you just build part.
If I'm not mistaken, it took quite a while to build out Brooklyn, didn't it? Twenty years, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so, so there's, I mean, Bruce is right, I mean, i- if the town says, well, wait a minute. You know, you can revisit this in the, in the comp plan, in the comprehensive plan and change the underlying zoning and. You know, and address it that way. I mean, I think that if we're going to include that flexibility, there should be a reference to it in this ordinance. You know, so it's just really a matter, I mean, a lot of it's going to be market driven, right, though, because if, if the development then. If twenty years goes by and they can't find somebody to, to finish the project, then. The likelihood, you know, it's, it's chances are that there's a change in market conditions, right? And, and so, the developer at that point probably wouldn't even want to proceed with whatever the heck it was in the underlying plan.
Correct, they would probably come in and ask for something completely different.
Yeah, you know, and, and so, to a certain extent, a lot of this will be market driven. It's just something that, you know, that came up and the idea of. You know, the, the other thing we want to ensure is that, you know, nobody loses this plan, right? I mean, we need to keep track of what's been done and what's been decided, and I think that you've got a really good crew here. You know, but we do need to keep track of, of what we're doing, so. That's something that's up for discussion, um, but, but Bruce is correct, and if you want to revisit it, then maybe that's what we do. Is just put a, drop a line in the ordinance and say, to say that, you know, to the extent. You know, further development hasn't occurred, there is a potential that this could, you know, that the, that the master plan could be obviated. As a result of a change in zoning during the next comprehensive plan cycle.
I have no problem with that.
There you go.
Say that again?
Basically, if, if I understood it, what she is saying is that if you take away the, um, whatever we're calling this, the E F. E D F D zone, that the master plan would go away with it, so. You understand, so if, if you down, if, say it's a hundred acre parcel, and we've developed ten acres of it. And the town is tired of looking at the ninety acres, and it's never being developed, Leslie is probably right, no developer's going to wait forever. They're going to come in and redo their master plan with you guys at some point, because it's not working, but let's just say they're lazy and they just let it sit there. I think what Leslie's proposing is that if you removed the underlying zoning, the E D F D zoning. That the, whatever master plan we have would also go away with it.
That seems logical.
Which seems logical, well.
Yeah.
But it, it needs to be stated.
Yeah, I think it bears.
It, it would, I would, it would, I agree with Leslie, with Ms. Powell. I think that's fine, we could put that language in there, because I think that works.
Come to an agreement, I just, I have one question I ask for Leslie.
Yeah.
Considering, I think we're all familiar, if a developer wants to change the zoning on something, hoops that have to be changed. So if we want to change the zoning, you know, back during our five and ten year thing, and the developer doesn't want any part of that. What are the hoops we got to go through?
Well, this would be addressed during the comprehensive plan cycle, I mean, that's a legislative process, you have pretty much free rein. With what you do, I mean, of course, people that have current zoning are allowed, certainly entitled to come in and testify that you shouldn't do it.
Right.
But, you know, the comp plan process is legislative one, and you're, you're, you know, you're in charge of making the recommendations. I mean, we're getting ready to do one now, you know, making the recommendations to the Board of Commissioners and then, and so it goes.
Right, so we're free during that, you know, like say, for a development company, there is a change that they can say that. Substantially changed and it can't be zoned industrial anymore, I want it residential, to have us change it. When we want to change it, we can say, the sky is green today, we're going to change it, is that what I'm hearing? They can testify against it and say, don't, but we're free to do that, you know, just hear their.
Well.
Has to have a rational basis, but other than that. The sky being green is not a good. But I, but yes, well, you do have relatively free rein as legis, as a legislative act.
Yeah.
I would agree with Leslie on that.
So, I mean, I think that if we, if we include that language specifically. In sub paragraph I. That would be helpful.
Yep, I wrote it down.
Okay. Then we have. Yeah, the last one, which I have to admit, now I'm currently perplexed.
Talking about the sign one? Or the.
No.
The last comment on page six.
Was there a sign comment?
You just still, you just didn't like our, so you said, didn't discuss with us, but you, you wanted. You wanted to use your base signage, and that's fine.
Right, yeah, no, we were, yeah, so a, a topic of discussion came up about signage and. Staff's position was, well, just stick with your sign ordinance.
We're fine with that.
Okay.
But, sorry, can I throw something in there? The sign ordinance as written now is per zone.
Right, but this would have sort of, hmm.
Well, it would be the.
The underlying zone that would be allowed, right? It's either going to be B two industrial or, um.
O R I.
Or I.
Yeah. Let me talk to Leslie about that.
That's a good point, no, that's a very good point.
Thanks.
So that, so the signage is not based on the use, it's based on the zone?
Yeah, it's based on the zone.
Yeah.
And so if you had a McDonald's in one zone and a McDonald's in another zone, they'd have different signage?
They, they possibly could, but.
Some of them are harmonious, others are not.
All right, well, Leslie and I will look at that, because I don't, I'm fine with it being uniform, as long as I know how to find it and figure out what it is.
Sorry, I couldn't resist. Then I think we had a question. Specificity to the board of commissioners.
Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, I don't know what that means either.
I think Chris talked about, um, like kind of coming up with a rubric to like help commissioners kind of figure out, you know, what criteria they'll look through to approve the plans.
To approve the site plan or the master plan?
Okay, so I sort of thought that was already in here.
Yeah.
I know this, I think what this relates to Najila is when we were talking about, you know, the buffers and the, the scale and size language that we had upfront, it was to address, you know, the environmental concerns or the, you know, the sensitive areas. I think that's what that was for. Yeah, because I'm looking at it now and saying, I have no idea what this means. I apologize, but I think that that was a referral back to the first comment.
Okay, okay. All right, Kim, cross that out.
Yeah, because basically what happens is the, the planning commission goes through this with its planning commission expertise. And then, you know, you can make specific recommendations to the board because the board of committee, this isn't the board of commissioners, you know, like regular thing.
Right.
Right? And so you can make recommendations based on your experience as a planning commission, you know, for the board of commissioners to consider in its review and approval or rejection of any master plan.
Leslie, we'll be able to review this again, correct, before the public hearing is held?
So we will certainly send it to you in advance. We weren't planning on having another workshop. Would a workshop, would another one be helpful?
Well, not, I mean, just to go over it? If you have any additional questions?
Well, we can certainly do that at the public hearing. But if you think a workshop would be helpful, we could do that too. I mean, it's, it's up to you.
I'll leave it to the other commissioners.
But I get, I mean, I take your point. Yeah, because you could say, well, what about this? And then we could, you could also recommend approvals, you know, subject to, you know, X, Y, and Z. And then it would go to the board of commissioners with your recommendation that these other areas be looked at. You know, does the applicant have a preference?
Or not, that's another workshop. I'm not going to follow my sport.
So, so I don't necessarily want to rush things, but I also don't want to just take up our time for no particular reason either. I mean, most of the language is in place here. Our attorney and the applicant's attorney are pretty much in agreement. There's just a few things that need to be worked out, it sounds like. So I'd be comfortable with not having another workshop, but.
Well, and if there are specific issues that come up that you want to, you know, include in your recommendation to the board of commissioners, because that's the last stop, you can certainly do it at the public hearing.
So let me make sure I understand. So this, are we having a public hearing here at, at the board of, planning commission?
Yes, you have to have a, yet another one, a public hearing before the planning commission to consider the recommendation of the proposed ordinance on the EDFD or whatever it is we're calling it. And then that it be forwarded to the commissioners for their review and approval. And at that point you can add, I mean, as Valerie indicated, if there are any things that come up that you think really need to be included, you can say, and we're recommending this subject to, or, you know, with the proviso, that we ask the board of commissioners to also consider, you know, A, B, and C, or whatever it is that you might wish to have at that point. Because you're right, the bulk of the language is, you know, in our view, resolved.
Will the town commissioners also have a public hearing?
The board does, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have a question for Ms. Powell. What timeframe are we looking at potentially for, for our public hearing?
So for the planning commission, it would be next month?
Okay.
I think, I mean, it's subject to availability. We should be able to get that done.
I'm not, I don't know if my availability, I'm assuming it'll be near the end of the month. There's a possibility I might not be at that. I would be abstaining that night though, because it'd be going to the board of commissioners. But we do have an alternate onboard too, so I'm just throwing that out there now. I don't know yet, but.
Sure. No, Najila just indicated that it would be July 24th.
Okay. I'll let you all know. I'm just thinking ahead here.
And we'll get you a red line, you know, well in advance of the meeting.
Do you need any more guidance from us this evening on anything, Leslie?
I think we've covered it. I don't, unless the applicant thinks we've missed something. Najila, do you think we've missed anything?
So as I see it, the benefits of this new zone is to create some flexibility for whoever develops this so that they can get the maximum amount of economic development for the town. Maybe, maybe I'm not saying that right.
That sounds a little mercenary.
Could you explain what the benefit to the town is?
The benefit to the applicant is to effectively have something, have a tool in place at the town that Andrew can then market to developers saying, this tool is in place. If you're, if you're interested in Mr. Trout's property or in any of these other properties that are on your map, that would meet the criteria, this tool is in place. Now you would have to go get the property rezoned and get a master plan approved. So that's, that's the benefit to Mr. Trout and to Andrew is their ability to market the property. Benefit to the town is you get the flexibility of a master planned project as opposed to us waiting a year. Let's just say we have B two on half 50 acres and IP on the other. And then they just come in with site plans and subdivision plans and just, you know, effectively, your leeway is the planning commission and approving those site plans and subdivision plans is limited under Maryland law. If they meet all the criteria, they meet all the criteria. This would be enable you to create additional open space, additional pedestrian paths, all the things that Chris and Leslie and Najila worked out with us, you know, that give the town benefits of a planned development. And that's why when Commissioner Hagan brought up the open space, it was like, yeah, why didn't I put that in there? Because that's almost always part of the master plan. What is, what do you get out of it? So example, Frederick City, if they're doing a master plan, a PND or an MU master plan, they, the, the benefit to the applicant is they get more density. The benefit is to the city is they get a lot more green space, open space, pedestrian connectivity, road connectivity, all that, that they don't necessarily, can't impose through the straight zoning process. So by giving the town the flexibility, you end up with a project that you're all proud of, not just the developers making money off of. That's why I said it sounded a little mercenary. Yeah, there's a definite economic benefit to the applicant. But there's a lot of benefit to the town, which is why we propose to do it this way.
So it sounds, you know, the way you've put it there, it's a win-win for the town and the applicant. Is staff seeing any downside to any of this? I mean, this is a whole new zone for us that has never existed before. I've, I've been trying to think of a downside. I haven't really come up with any.
No, no, I, I don't think so. I mean, and the one downside we've come up with a solution for, so, you know, which is zoning in perpetuity. But I, I think that a lot of other jurisdictions have had, you know, planned unit developments in place for, you know, for residential type buildings that have mixed uses that wouldn't, I mean, and there's a lot of benefit to be achieved from that. And you do get much more civilized, pedestrian friendly developments with more connectivity. And I don't see any reason that, you know, that you shouldn't consider this, frankly.
Just, just one moment. We'll get, the commissioners have any other thoughts or comments while, while Bruce was still at the podium?
I just wanted to ask, Mr. Trout's property is B two? The, the current area was just B two top right?
But that's part of it, but it's also the property immediately to the north of it.
Okay, and the CR.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll allow a question.
Diane Walbrecker, 535 West Main Street. When you guys are talking about this floating zone being as part of the ordinances, does that mean that this zone can be applied to any property within Emmitsburg? I mean, or is this just?
The criteria that's spelled out in here.
All right, with the large area, et cetera, et cetera, with the criteria. Okay.
A minimum of 25 acres and would already be B two or institutional or office research.
So it could be applied to other properties within our area? So it would be included in the comprehensive plan update?
Yeah, correct.
But, but, well, no, in, in the comprehensive plan update, it'll have the underlying zoning for all the properties. What this is, is a different vehicle. And so you could apply it if, you know, if the minimum criteria are met. So it's the 25 acres. And I think there's also this strange zoning where things got parked, which, what was that called? Thank you. It was the CR, yeah, the conservation resource, because I, I never really understood how that worked.
But. Sounds weird to me too.
The, the conference plan could recommend that this.
Sure.
Land use designation, you could put in your conflict, we think that property should be EDFD in your conflict map. It isn't a zoning map, it's a.
Yeah, that's a guidance.
Right, right.
If you thought, wow, all, maybe all the property on the east side of 15 should be this.
Why is the R three green? Because that's not included.
Okay, that, that was my question. So thank you very much.
So you brought up. We'll, we'll get it to you. So Diane brought up the term floating zone and we discussed this two months ago. So, so why are we calling this a floating zone? Because there appear to be some difficulty, some people understanding this.
It is. It's an overlay zone.
It's an overlay zone, but it's not, you know.
An overlay zone is something that floats over the town that you then bring down an overlay on specific piece of property. Effectively what an overlay or floating zone means.
So, so it's not spelled out on the zoning map?
No, it, well, it would be if you, if you rezoned the property to the EDFD, then your zoning map will show EDFD on your zoning map.
Right.
So it is an actual zone. It is just not a Euclidean zone. So there's, there is always a basis, what Leslie was referring to, is an underlying zone. But the actual zone is what you have imposed from above. So.
Right. And if it were, and you know, and when the master plan or if a master plan is adopted, that's when you stamp on your little zoning map, the EDFD designation. Right.
Okay.
I think we covered ground here.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I have one more question, if you don't mind. I noticed on the map over in the left corner is R one, which is low density residential. That area must be greater than 25 acres.
Um, so.
It doesn't apply to R one anyway.
It's a place of businesses.
I just want to make sure it doesn't apply to R one since it's included on the map.
It doesn't include it, commercial property only.
I just want to make sure. Thank you.
No, and in fact, I was just discussing that with Najila. We really, we should un-highlight those residentially designated, even though it's not, so it's not confusing.
Yes, thank you.
Argis betrayed me, sorry.
Well, I think we've had a good discussion. Any final thoughts before we move on? Any final things from staff?
Um, if we're going to talk about the next meeting date, I just checked the calendar. The last Monday of July is the 31st, not the 24th.
Okay.
So our next meeting would be on the 31st.
31st?
Yes.
Is that all we need to discuss then, Najila?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.